The United States of America is the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for sharing the public meeting act, the South Jersey Times and the Southern Journal, finding this feeding, you will also, which is on the township's website and posted in the news.
Yes. Mr. Felice.
Here.
Mr. Hannel.
Here.
Mr. Ketchum.
Here.
Mr. De Cesaray.
Here.
Mr. Garpolo.
Here.
Mr. Gaitano.
Here.
And Travis Brainerd.
Here.
Okay, the attorneys of Mr. Iglesias and Mr. Leo will speak our alternate Indiana impression. Okay, first on our agenda tonight is ZD 22302 in the name of Elevated LLC.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Richard Wells from Archer and Griner here on behalf of the applicant Elevated LLC. As I get started with introduction, would it be okay, I have hand out copies of some exhibits that we'll be referencing during the meeting?
Exhibit A.
Yeah, and these are...
We can't hear you.
Is it...
It's live.
It's live? Does it project back there?
It does, but you've got to use a little bit more volume.
Sure. How is this?
Better.
You got it, no problem. So I do have hand out sized copies of exhibits. They're nothing new, they're just copies of materials that were submitted with the application, but I figured for ease of reference, we'd provide those.
Just mark that. Package is A1?
They are pre-marked.
Okay.
Yeah, so we have pre-marked exhibits, A1 being the witness and exhibit list, and pre-marked from there. Again, we are here seeking a use variance for requesting permission to utilize the property as a licensed cannabis cultivation facility. We are just seeking use variance relief, we are not seeking a site plan approval at this time. If the use variance is approved, we would then move forward with the applicable site development application if that, again, if and only if the use variance is approved. So today what we're here to do is talk about operational testimony and how we feel this site is appropriate for the proposed use. This property is known as 1835 Harding Highway and is identified on the Franklin Township tax maps as block 7203, lot 4, and it is within a highway commercial zoning district. Notice of this application was published in the newspaper on May 25th and was also served via certified mail to all those on the certified property list obtained from both Franklin Township and Newfield. Copies of those notice materials were also served to the board secretary and board solicitor for review. And on May 30th, this application was deemed complete, subject to one requested submission waiver, that submission waiver being a copy of the agreement of sale. The applicant is the contract purchaser and we're happy to provide a confidential copy of that contract as a condition of approval if the board requires it for purposes of completeness. That being said, we are squarely before this board's jurisdiction this evening. As per our witness and exhibit list, I have one witness this evening, the applicant. We can have him sworn in now or a little bit later.
Okay, Travis Brainerd, please. You swear to God, you're not testing here to get...
Yes, sir.
Name and address, please, for the record.
Jason Hurley, 297 West Eighth Street, Ship Bottom, New Jersey.
Thank you, Jason. So you are the owner of the applicant entity, correct?
Correct.
Any other owners involved, or are you just the sole owner?
I am the sole owner.
Great. Just tell us a little bit about yourself before we get into operational testimony. What led you to pursue this business and why are you here this evening?
I'm here basically to, I feel like it's part of the last American dream here. This industry is brand new to the state, everything is growing, everything is just starting out, and I'm trying to get in on something at the ground level and grow it to help not only myself, but also the state of New Jersey.
So you are, you're the sole owner, sole operator, you're not outsourcing this to an out-of-state company? You intend to own and operate this locally as a resident and go from there, correct?
Correct. And as, my license is a micro-business license, and as far as the state is concerned, part of the regulations for a micro-business, I actually have to live within the town or a bordering town. So I'm actually going to be part of the community here.
And I want to talk a little bit about your license. You received what's called a micro-business conditional award, correct?
Correct.
So that's effectively the first step in the licensing process, step one we'll say, and that conditional award allows you to perfect that approval, allows you to find a space and secure that space, obtain all local approvals before getting the state's final award to operate, correct?
Correct. The only thing I would add to that is the construction of the facility would have to happen before being approved by the state, final approval to move ahead and operate.
Correct. And as part of that final approval, you also have to have all of your operating procedures, all of your employee procedures, effectively your full business inside and out vetted and approved by the state, correct?
Correct.
So you're here to take that first step to try and perfect your approval and move on forward with your award?
That is correct, yes.
How long ago did you receive your conditional award?
I received it in November of last year.
And we're here in June. You didn't just sit on your hands and decide to appear this evening. Have you been searching for property for effectively six or seven months?
Correct. I started immediately looking for properties, I scoured the entire state. First of all, only 25% of municipalities in the state are allowing this. So right off the bat, a lot has just been removed from the board here, basically. So yes, it took me six to seven months to find this property and now also, you know, three or four months to prepare this application and be able to present it to everyone here.
Thank you, Jason. So with that background in mind, let's talk about cultivation in general. We're going to talk about your operation as well, but I want to confirm to the board what cultivation is and what that looks like. So you're effectively growing cannabis, correct?
Correct.
Not doing anything else, you're not selling it to consumers, you're not processing it, you're not extracting, no manufacturing options at all?
I wouldn't be allowed to as far as the state is concerned. My license is solely for cultivation only.
And this is proposed to take place entirely indoors?
Correct.
No greenhouse facilities or screen houses or anything that would be considered open-air at all?
Correct, none of that.
Great. What would the general hours of operation be before we get into some of the specifics?
It would be your general business hours, maybe eight to five, eight to six, nine to five, something along those lines.
And that's adjusted as needed, basically?
Correct.
How many employees would be facilitating that general business hour?
The goal is to have about five or six employees, but as far as the state is concerned, I can have no more than 10 employees for my license.
And that's no more than 10 employees total, not per shift?
Correct.
So you're expecting to have between five and six employees in addition to yourself, employ them in shifts during normal business hours throughout the week. This is not an operation that requires 24/7 heavy in-and-out operation, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. So when those employees are on-site, let's say it's normal business hours, the first employees show up for their shift, what types of things are they doing in your facility?
They will be essentially the entire process of cultivation, they will be working in the nursery to let the seedlings grow, then move on to the vegetative state where the plants basically grow but do not flower, and then they get moved on to a mature state where they actually flower. They will be essentially taking control of everything from, you know, water to watering the plants, to clean up, to pruning, to harvesting and packaging. Essentially, that is the entire operation.
Is there any heavy or specialized equipment required for this?
No.
Nothing that would, you know, operate even like a forklift, something that would create any types of noise either inside or outside?
No. Being that this is a micro-business, at the start, everything will be done by hand. They will be potted by hand, they will be watered by hand, no automated systems whatsoever. It's a very, very small operation.
And with that operation, again, your facility is proposed to be roughly 5,000 square feet, I think the exact dimensions are around 4,600 square feet is your concept plan. Is that something where you harvest once a year, twice a year? How often is that turnover?
In the concept plan, I have two mature rooms, and basically the idea is to stagger those rooms so that a harvest happens every other month. Typically, the process is about three to three and a half months long. In order to have as many harvests in the year, I've spoken to cultivation experts and this is what's done around the states that are legal now. They stagger all of their rooms so that they maintain a constant busyness with all the employees. So not everybody's just sitting around waiting for the next harvest to happen.
So one harvest every other month is the goal. What does a harvest actually look like? What happens when you harvest?
Once the plants reach a mature height and they flower, the harvest is essentially, you know, cutting them down, trimming them up, then they would go into a dry and cure room for about 14, 15 days until it reaches a very small water content in the flower itself. Once that happens, then that gets packaged, stored, and sent out for testing.
And once it's approved for testing, do you store it in the facility? Is it warehoused at all, or are you shipping it right off to the end-users, the dispensaries?
There is a small storage area within the facility. The idea is that once it goes out for testing and we get the approval back from testing, all of that product immediately leaves the facility and goes to either a retailer or distributor.
So there's no effective warehousing operation in there as soon as it's approved for testing, you're sending it out?
That is the goal, yes.
And when you do finally send that product out, is this something where you need a line of 18-wheelers in and out of the facility? Or I believe our conversation earlier, you mentioned your entire harvest could fit in a Sprinter van, correct?
Correct.
And a Sprinter van is something that you see typical Amazon deliveries?
Yep, that would be the one.
So your harvest is ready, you're sending it out to your distributor, and that is the equivalent of one Sprinter van on-site coming in and out, and that's it, right?
Correct.
And that would occur every other month?
That would occur every, once every other month.
Great. What about water usage for that turnover? I know it sounds like, you know, a lot of harvesting, a lot of growing, a lot of turnover. Is this something that requires a significant water demand?
No, not much more than your average household. I've looked this up. According to the EPA, an average household uses 300-plus gallons per day. My operation at maximum capacity and worst-case scenario will run about 350 to 375 gallons per day, slightly more than your average household.
And what about energy uses as well? So we confirm this is all indoors, meaning obviously you have some artificial lighting going on. How's the energy usage look for the facility?
The energy usage, I'm proposing plenty of solar panels on the roof and then in conjunction with your normal utility power, that is enough to run the facility and run the lighting.
So you don't need any special generators, any special equipment, no industrial power supply or anything?
No, no. The only thing that would be added to it would be backup generators so that in a case of power outage, the lighting still happens, the HVAC systems still work, and I don't lose an entire crop. That it will not be the main source of power, that is just a backup in case.
Backup emergency.
Correct.
Great. So let's talk about what I'm sure is on everybody's mind, the odor. Generally, we understand there's turnover once every other month. Is the facility going to smell every other month? Is it going to smell at all, or what is going to be perceptible from outside?
The smell mainly occurs during the flowering phase. During seedling and the vegetative phase, there's very, very little scent that comes off of the plant. So it's really restricted to, I'll say, the last two to three weeks of the cycle where you would get any kind of odor. The systems, the HVAC systems that I'm looking at, they are indoor farming systems, they are completely enclosed, they are completely self-contained, they have filtration built into them. What I'm looking at, what I'm proposing to put in is the filtration systems have a MERV rating, a MERV rating. The ratings go from 1 to 20. The higher the number, the stronger the filtration. I am proposing in my equipment to run a 14. To put that in perspective, a typical household filter is 1 to 4. A surgical clean room in a hospital is a 16, just under a surgical cleaner.
And then you mentioned there's a couple other layers of filtration involved, so that's your first line of defense, we'll say, for odor. What are the second two lines of defense?
There are additional pieces of equipment that can be placed within the cultivation rooms or any room that houses any of this product, essentially mitigating the odor within each room before it even goes into the HVAC system. So you have your primary odor mitigation and then your secondary that runs within the HVAC system. So it's basically a backup for the odor mitigation.
And do those systems consist generally of charcoal filters?
They are charcoal filters, essentially carbon scrubbers, charcoal scrubbers. Some equipment is, you know, ion-based equipment where it sends ions out into the space that mitigate the odor immediately, whatever it touches. Those would be the additional pieces of equipment that would go within each room.
And that combination of equipment in your experience and your understanding of the industry is not only consistent, like you said, within indoor farming, but specifically consistent with odor mitigation in the cannabis industry?
Correct. These pieces of equipment are essentially industry standard in the states that have already been running this for multiple years.
Now, you mentioned, of course, that this was an indoor facility. It's a little bit more robust though than, you know, maybe just building a pole barn or something of that effect. You described it earlier to me as a sealed system. Could you explain for the board what you mean by a sealed system?
Well, every building has an envelope around it. In my personal experience, my personal work experience, I've worked in the architecture industry for the last 20 years, designing houses all over the state. Every building has an envelope, there is air leakage no matter what you do. To have a completely sealed building is almost an impossibility. However, the construction process that I plan on using for those cultivation rooms, the dry rooms, anything that will house these products, all walls and ceilings will be spray foam with a closed-cell spray foam, essentially sealing off that room as best as it can be. Imagine if you caulked every crack and nook and cranny in a room and sealed it up, that's what this does, as well as insulate it from the outside air.
And you also employ a CO2 injection system, is that correct?
That is a necessary piece of equipment. Obviously, the way the photosynthesis works, you know, it's taking the CO2 and providing oxygen. So the CO2 needs to be replenished because air from the outside is not coming in. It's a closed system, so the CO2 and oxygen needs to be regulated within the building.
And I think that's important to say, that you're not pulling air in, you're not venting any air out either, it's all handled from within the facility, correct?
Correct. There is some small, you know, a small amount of air coming in, it's just what has to be just for comfort and, you know, just industry standard regulations.
Someone opens the door, air comes in?
Correct.
But that outside door, as per our floor plans, doesn't open directly into the cultivation facility, right?
No. Each room that houses any of these products does not have a window or an exterior entry point. Everything is accessed from the inside of the building.
And to further mitigate any air escaping, is it your intent to utilize what's known as negative air pressurization?
Correct.
And could you explain what that means for the board?
Essentially, it means when you open the door from the outside, you will feel a rush of air from the outside going into the building. Essentially, no air will escape outside, from inside to outside. It will be pulling the air from the outside to the inside to relieve some of that odor escaping the building.
So with all those systems in place, your methods of construction, your multiple layers of filtration that meet and sound like they exceed industry standards, the design of the building, the negative air pressurization, it is your goal and it's your understanding that this design will result in no perceptible odor whatsoever from the property line of the building, correct?
That is the goal, correct, yes.
So the ordinary passerby, walking or driving by, would not be able to detect cannabis odor at all at any point in the growth cycle, whether it's early or whether it's the peak flowering time at all?
They should not.
Great. And if that does become a problem, if your system needs revision, if it needs more robust additional charcoal filters, do you have any problems making sure that you add to that system as necessary so that problem is completely eliminated?
No, not at all. That's a necessary thing that must happen.
And that's not just a representation to this board, but that is also a condition of your state license, correct?
Correct.
So the state requires you to mitigate that odor. If you do receive complaints and you fail to correct them, you are at risk of losing your state license.
Yeah, they will either revoke or suspend the license, multiple fines, whatever they, you know, see fit for that particular situation.
So safe to say it's not something you're just stating here to try and get a use variance, right?
Correct. That's why I say it's a necessary part of the process.
I want to move on to security, because you touched on something about no windows or doors on the outside of the building. First thing I want to highlight though is just the general desirability of the product. You mentioned that these plants, you know, they only smell a little bit towards the end of the cultivation cycle, that's when your odor mitigation comes into play, but are these plants desirable to someone who would want to break in all the time?
No, no. They would only be desirable, honestly, after the curing process and the drying process happens. Even before that, even once it's harvested, the plants are just too wet, they're just unusable. So from seedling to, you know, actual harvest and sitting in the dry room, there's really no use for it.
And the dry room that you're talking about, again, there's a little bit of time in between them being dried and being approved from testing, that's not just like a closet or a cupboard or a drawer, right? Is that the equivalent of a vault?
That would be the equivalent of a vault. It would either be a key card access or a keypad access, and along similar lines, essentially every door that goes into any of these rooms will have a key card or keypad access and would be limited to the master grower and myself, the owner. You know, not all employees or anybody that goes into the building will have access to any of those rooms.
In that vault that stores your dried product while it's awaiting distribution, that is something that the design, the operation of that vault, who has access to it, all has to be approved by the Cannabis Regulatory Commission, correct?
Correct.
I want to go back a little bit to the key cards as well.
Sure.
So key cards allow you to regulate who can access where. Does that also allow you to kind of pull your records after the fact and see who went into what room when they...
Absolutely. Every time something is swiped or a keypad, you know, a key is entered, it's logged and recorded.
Great. What about the very outside door, you're almost your first line of defense? How is that accessed?
That is, well, it will be locked outside of normal operating business hours. Obviously, the door has to be open for deliveries or anybody that would come, but this is not a retail location. The only traffic that's coming in and out will be the employees and deliveries. That is it. This is not, if I could have it closed to the public, I would, but that's not a, possibly, it's not feasible. You know, it has to be open, the mailman has to come and deliver, you know, UPS has to come in and deliver. You know, it can't be a locked door 24/7.
Yeah, and I want to clarify that when you say can't be closed to the public, this is not something where just anybody off the street could walk in and tour the facility. It is technically close to the public. You meant deliveries, mailmen, things like that?
Right. I meant more along the lines of a retail shop where someone's coming in and browsing and shopping, possibly buying something. Nothing is for sale, nothing will be for sale in this facility. There would be no reason for anybody to come in. I will not be providing tours, none of that.
And along the lines of record-keeping and security, one thing you mentioned I want to highlight, you mentioned kind of seed to end of life. You're required to actually track every single step at every point of the way, where the plan is at all times. It's a seed-to-sale tracking system, right?
Correct, correct. And that's something that's governed by the state and regulated by the state. It's called a metrics system that they have in place, and it's exactly the way they call it, a seed-to-sale. So essentially, every single seed is tracked from the seed itself to the final delivery to either a retailer or distributor, it's tracked along the entire process.
So you couldn't have an employee, you know, like you said, only a few employees have access to the dry room, one of those employees has a bad streak, they go in and they try to steal a little bit of product, you're going to find out immediately, right?
Correct. Everything is scanned essentially daily to make sure that nothing is missing and where everything is along the process, the entire process.
Great. What about camera systems also? So it's great that you have everything locked, it's great you have the ability to control access, but do you have camera systems on the facility?
Camera systems, again, it's, that's a regulation from the state. Essentially, every square inch of the interior of the facility needs to be covered by a camera, aside from, you know, your bathrooms and private areas, things like that. And those, as well as the inside, the entire exterior of the building and every entry point within the building will be covered by a camera 24/7. Now, those cameras will be watched by a third party that is monitored 24 hours, seven days a week.
And that's not necessarily because you're scared of break-ins, but it's, again, a requirement of your state license in order to maintain a system like that?
Correct. Those systems have to be in place in order for me to go from a conditional license to a annual license.
Any objection to the extent the variance is approved and the police are interested in providing them access to that footage if they ask for it?
Oh, no, no problem.
Great. And in terms of personal security in general, you mentioned deliveries, you know, once every other month. Do you see a need or potential to have third-party security services supervise those deliveries?
Possibly supervising the deliveries at that time. As I, the 24-hour monitoring of the security cameras is, for this kind of facility, is more than enough.
And the distributors are under their own security requirements as well, right?
Correct.
So those people who are coming up in the Sprinter van to pick up your product, is it your understanding they're required to have actually two, not two drivers, but two people in the van?
A minimum of two in the van. That's, yes.
And your security protocols in conjunction with the distributors' protocols are more than sufficient to address any concerns at the state or local level?
Yes.
Great. Moving on to what happens to the product if you have to destroy it, you know, every once in a while, you know, something could happen, you could get a bad crop, the testing might not pass, you might have to dispose of stuff. Are you just going to chuck it out in the backyard?
No, no. That is also another thing that is regulated by the state, and they have multiple options for disposal, mainly third-party disposals. It's not something that I can just dump in a garbage can and let the garbage guy pick it up. That's, I will lose my license if I do that.
So any cannabis or usable cannabis products have to be disposed of? They're going to be disposed of off-site? That in itself requires a bunch of reporting and recording requirements in order to dispose of those products, correct?
Correct.
So just to be absolutely clear, no usable cannabis products, no potentially usable cannabis products, any way, shape, or form are going to be in your regular garbage?
Correct.
What about your regular garbage? So is this something, you know, with the level of employees that you have, is this going to generate a ton of waste?
I do not believe so. We're talking five or six employees, small break room, your average, you know, garbage from those uses should not be extravagant, you know, should not be huge.
No hazardous chemicals, hazardous wastes, anything that requires special disposal?
No, and even if there is, it would be regulated by the state and be disposed of according to their rules and regulations.
Great. So you intend to either locate a dumpster or a small trash receptacle, whatever is necessary for your size on-site, and have that picked up by a private hauler, right?
Correct.
And that'll be picked up as needed, just to make sure there's no overflow, no messing with the trash there?
Yeah, and that would have to be regulated as things go, see how often they have to come and empty it out.
Now, with respect to lighting, you confirm that no windows or doors on the cultivation room, so your grow lighting isn't going to emanate from the inside to the outside, right?
No, there will be no light coming in from the outside and there will be no light from inside escaping to the outside.
What about exterior site lighting? What do you anticipate needing for that?
I would prefer to, my goal would be to have the exterior, say, 10 to 15 feet around the building to be lit up by exterior lighting, floodlights, this and that, essentially every corner of the building, every entry point in the building have its own lighting and its own camera system.
And this is, again, more along the lines... And this is, again, more along the lines of a site plan discussion, but effectively, it's not your intent to have, you know, to try and land a plane here. You don't need a lot of light on the site, just minimum lighting for security?
No, yeah, and it's basically, it's for security. The idea is if anybody walks up to the building, I would want them to be visible, whether it's night or day.
And of course, if we are able to move forward and submit a site plan application, we intend to comply with all minimum and maximum lighting requirements, right?
Correct.
And any lighting at the site, you said, is mostly building-mounted? But if you have a lighting standard or two in the parking lot, it's not going to be a very high one, downward facing and shielded, again, to minimize light spill over.
Correct.
And for off-hours lighting, obviously, just reduce it to the minimum. For on-hours lighting, you have to meet the minimum standards for the parking lot.
Correct, yes.
No signage, right? So you don't need to light up a sign? You don't need a lit sign? You don't need kind of blinking signage, things like that?
No, not at all. Being that this is, as I said before, I know it's a publicly accessed building per se, but this is not something that I want advertised to the public. I'm not trying to draw people in. In fact, I'd rather keep people away. So I do not want a sign on the street, on the highway, just a sign on the building and the address number, and that's it. You know, very, very low-key.
And it's your intent, again, to make this building kind of blend in with other commercial buildings in the area?
That is the intent, yes.
We submitted some concept plans with the application. Those concept plans are marked as A5. Is it your intent to try and pursue one of those designs?
Correct.
And is it your understanding, based upon searching for properties in the area, that that design would blend in pretty well with other commercial properties?
As far as I know, yes.
From a site suitability standpoint, again, we're not talking about large volumes of 18-wheelers here, but is access still important to you for commercial corridors, things like that?
As far, if you could explain that a little bit more.
Sure, sorry, I'll rephrase it. Again, so you don't need, you know, large-volume truck access. You don't need to be right on 295, anything like a logistics park. But you're still having your product distributed throughout the state, right?
Correct, yes.
So being close to, at least within reason, some commercial corridors are important?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
No, no problem. And in terms of the site and the surrounding area, you mentioned spending roughly six months looking for a property. Is this, in your opinion, suitable for your operation?
In my opinion, it is. It's in a commercial zone. It's right on the highway. Like you said, easily accessible for any kind of distribution that needs to happen to any retail or distributor. And the property is plenty, large enough. I'm using just a tiny, tiny percentage of the lot itself. So I feel it is a good fit.
And from the perspective of an outsider, assuming if you get an approval and you're able to develop the property substantially similar to our concept plans here, would there be any reason for anyone to believe, whether visually, aesthetically, odor, noise, sound, anything to indicate that cannabis operations are going on in this building?
Yeah, no.
Thank you. You know, no, no problem. One thing I forgot I wanted to mention. So access to the site, I completely skipped over this aspect of security. The concept plan shows fencing, right?
Correct. Fencing around the entire building, as well as a lockable gate on the driveway into the parking lot. That would be locked during off-hours.
And it's not your intent to have that look ominous? You're not going to use barbed wire, no electric fences, anything like that?
No, I do not want to draw attention to the property.
Right. So a locked gate that obviously emergency personnel will have access to if they need it. It'll be closed all times during off-hours. Only employees will have access.
Correct.
Great. And again, in your experience, based upon your knowledge of the state's security requirements, is that sufficient?
That is sufficient as far as the state is concerned.
And any objection if the board during the site plan process has some comments on what type of fence to use, you know, if they want some aesthetic improvements to the fence? Do you have any objection entertaining those comments?
None whatsoever.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I have no further operational questions for my client. I do have kind of a summation. Obviously, I'd like to address the fact that we're seeking a use variance here, but I figured it would be important to ask the client any questions that you may have operationally.
So the CRC regulates the filtration system?
Yes.
What you're allowed to have. And it also regulates your security. But do they inspect it?
Yes. They will inspect it once the building is constructed. They will inspect before I'm able to operate. And it's an annual license, so they will come out and inspect once a year at a minimum.
And we've had previous applications. They've been pretty educated in cannabis business here. And they all said it takes a tremendous amount of power.
That is not my understanding. I've spoken with multiple cultivation experts and multiple manufacturers of, the main draw is going to be the lighting and the HVAC. That's going to be the main power draw. I'm going to be using LED lighting to reduce the amount of electricity needed and a highest efficiency HVAC system that I can get. So that should eliminate any of those concerns.
And just one other question. I noticed that your architect shows a 4,640 feet.
Correct.
And your survey shows 3,833.
That was an old, that was from a previous application. That should have been updated with the, it's a 4,600.
And will you be able, if you're successful, will you be able to expand it?
Will I be able to expand it?
Will the state allow you to expand it?
No. I have a, the state regulates the size of the area that I can grow in, 2,500 square feet, and the size of the, what they call the physical plant. It's not the plant. It's like a power plant, you know, an industrial plant. That's not, they're not talking about the green plant. So they have a 2,500 square foot limitation on the grow area and a 2,500 square foot limitation on the accessory areas that have specifically to do with cultivation. So bathrooms, offices, storage areas, office storage areas do not count towards that square foot.
If you wanted to expand, you'd have to move somewhere else?
I would have to move or apply for a new license with the state and come in front of you again.
Sir, what's your next level of license to call? I can't recall the previous application.
There are, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Yours is a micro.
Micro. I believe there are five tiers of growing. The next tier up, I'm limited to 2,500 square feet. The next tier up is 10,000 square feet.
And the last application I think we looked at had a growing area and then a very large, I'm not sure if they call it processing area or something, but it was rare work line besides?
I saw the application and I saw what they did. And, no. Those people, you know, I feel like that application was trying to not just prepare for the future, but build for the future immediately.
And Jason, if I can just interject that?
Sure.
You're also not doing any processing. So there's a difference in those dual operations where you have growing and processing?
Correct.
That's where a lot of the power draw comes in?
You know what I'd add to that? You're also not, according to this application, you're not doing any concentrating to any distillates or anything like that?
No, that would be the manufacturing license.
Could the site plan change if, I mean, I'll see it a second.
That is going to come on our, when we go apply for the site plan approval. That information will be on there.
Yeah, this is just, basically, what we presented is a concept plan based upon Jason's preliminary work to say, what could we build? Where would it be located? What would it look like? And then the site plan application would show details like grading, septic, well, lighting plans, things like that, stormwater improvements. Those would all be part of the site plan. And this use variance would be, I'm sorry, the site plan would have to be consistent with this use variance. So, you know, we're saying 4,600, 5,000 square feet. We couldn't then come in with a 10,000 square foot facility because that would be inconsistent with the approval. So we have to be substantially consistent with this application and that site plan has to meet all of the site development standards.
So it's the cannabis that you're going to be growing. Is that for recreational use or medicinal?
Correct, recreational use.
And that's?
Why is the building located so close to the road?
That's for ease of construction, ease of access and security. I don't want something that's buried back in the woods that nobody can see, then somebody can come in. You know, I want something that's at least visible from the street as far as a security purpose.
And with respect to the medical question, if I may, it's not that the applicant is against providing medical products. It's just there's no legal ability to do so. So the ability to get a license to provide medical cannabis is gone effectively. So even if you wanted to, there's just no opportunity to do so. That may change for the state later on, but I just don't want the board to think we're against providing medical cannabis. It's just there's no ability to do so.
Can you grow it, make delivery and send it to whoever your client is? Or you send it to manufacturing?
Correct. I can only, I cannot sell to an end user. I can only sell to a retail license or a distributor or a manufacturing license. Those are the three places where I can go. That's it.
The policy to grow harvests and dry that has to stay in New Jersey? Maybe you don't need to answer this question, but?
It has to stay within the state of New Jersey. It's federally illegal at this moment and you're crossing state borders. Can't do that.
One of the things we need to realize that this is not illegal. It's legal marijuana. That's the state that did that.
State legally. Federally, still not.
Apparently it's not. It's not an illegal substance.
No.
Steve, why don't we do your engineering comments?
Great. Thank you, Chairman. Just sort of pause for a second because we didn't announce that the other applications, notice went out on the food business? Is it JP or?
No.
JC Company.
JC Company. In case anybody's here for JC Company, they're not being heard tonight. They are postponed to August 1st. The reason for the postponement was that their planner was not available for tonight. It was actually scheduled for tonight. I did confirm with, I confirmed with their planner that she was not available. She had actually three things. And we simply couldn't compel them to come in without a planner. Otherwise, we're raising issues. The whole issue is from the beginning.
And we don't have a July meeting?
We don't have a July meeting, so we haven't confirmed that she is available for August 1st. I assume you want notice to go out again?
Yes.
Since it's two months. So notice will be sent again for that application. It's intended to be August 1st, but it will be, it will be noticed.
We turned the fan off. It's like, I've missed almost every question that the council asked and most of what you just said. It's hard to hear over the radio.
I agree. We try.
Up in the corner. Oh, there's one on that side, too.
Possibility for future expansion or development, the rest of that ground?
As far as the license that I have now, it's impossible for me to do. I cannot. I would have to apply to the state for a different tier grow license and then come back, again, come back in front of you guys to propose something different.
Well, I think our engineer could, you know, give us a perspective. There's wetlands there, correct?
Correct.
In the back.
Yep. There's a stream, there's wetlands, there's wetlands, buffers. Those all will have to be addressed in conjunction with the site plan approval. And that's, I'm sure, one of the reasons that the facility was pushed close to the street.
Okay, you're on, Dave.
Sorry for the interruption. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you, Chairman and Board members. We had done a review of this and you should have it. It's dated May 30th, 2023, in which we reviewed what was submitted. We did a completeness review and it was our recommendation that the board deemed this application complete. Application, as we heard, is in the highway commercial zone. Cannabis cultivation is not a permitted use in the zone and therefore the need for the use variance application that we see here this evening. Mr. Wells has done a good job of going through my technical comments. That's contained on page four. I had concerns about number of employees or visitors or hours of operations, vehicles, things along those lines, which we've all heard testimony about, specifically security, growing light and odor mitigation. Some of my comments in technical comments requested that the applicant identify surrounding uses, neighbors, what's in the immediate vicinity. So at some point in time, you should do that. Also, you know, what's the distance to some of the nearest public facilities, churches, schools, daycares? Where are they in relationship to this proposed cultivation operation? Another comment I had, there appears to be an existing fenced-in area on your site. What's the disposition of that? Is it going to be used, removed? What's going on with that? So that's further question. Obviously, you're going to have to comply with all the state regulations for personal use cannabis rules and the medical marijuana rules. And we heard testimony about that this evening. And lastly, I wanted to make sure that everyone knew that this is strictly for the use variance, just for this first step. It is not for site plan, so we're not reviewing sidewalk, parking, lighting, all those other things that we identified earlier as part of site plan. We're only looking at the use to see. It's not a permitted use. Therefore, they're asking for the use variance. So if you could speak some about adjoining uses, that would be helpful at this point in time.
Jason, if I may, I'll just ask you, so again, you've been familiar with this area because you've sought out other properties in town as well as this area. You've had this property under an LOI for a little bit while, a little while. Again, it's your understanding this is in a highway commercial district, right?
Correct.
Is it a cross from a light manufacturing district?
I believe so, yes.
Some of the other uses on the road now, immediately adjacent to us, to what would be our right, if you're looking at an aerial with Route 40 above you, that is a residential property, correct?
Correct, yes.
And your concept plan here has the building set back as far to what is the left?
Yeah, I have it skewed away, as far away from the residential side as I can.
And there is an unimproved property to the left, correct?
Correct.
There is, as the board engineer mentioned, a small fenced area in the back. You don't have any intentions to use that, right?
No, that's an existing fence. I'm not even sure what it's being used for currently. It's buried in the woods, so if anything, it would just be removed.
With respect to some of the uses down the street, so is it accurate to represent there's some contractor supply businesses? Is there a trucking use down the street also?
I believe so, yes.
And I believe there's a garden supply a little bit further to the east as well, right?
Correct, yes.
Generally, your opinion that you would be compatible with those uses?
I believe so, yes.
And with the residential use, again, that's immediately to what would be our right if you're looking at our plan from above. You're proposing to keep that vegetative buffer that exists at the property, right? You wouldn't clear the property totally. You want to use as much of that vegetative buffer as possible.
Correct, absolutely, yes.
And again, more of a site plan question, but if it comes up that, you know, you might need to supplement that at all through additional landscaping, maybe additional fencing, any objection to just making sure that that buffer is robust as possible?
None whatsoever.
Thank you. In terms of sensitive uses around the property, again, the township doesn't have a specific buffer requirement. So some towns say 200 feet, some towns say 500, some say 1,000. It's different all over the board, but for our purposes, we're not within a thousandth feet of a school, right?
I, honestly, I'm not sure.
I did a quick check. The school was really what I was looking at.
Right, yes.
The drug-free school zones, the way, it's kind of interesting, if the board will allow me a short monologue. Drug-free school zones are a sentencing guideline. So it doesn't mean that outside of a drug-free school zone, drugs are permitted at the federal level. It just means if you conduct a drug-related offense within that area, your penalty is higher. At the federal level, that still remains. At the state level, because it's been declassified as a controlled substance, drug-free school zones at the state level don't really impact the cannabis industry so long as you are complying with the state-issued license. Some towns have enacted restrictions that match drug-free school zones just to try and be consistent. Others have put buffers of 200 or 500 feet from certain sensitive uses. We don't have sensitive uses that at least I'm aware of in the immediate vicinity of the site. But again, I'm sure we could find some depending on how far out you expand the map. If the board would like, we'd be happy to provide an analysis of that to say, notwithstanding that there are no buffer requirements, we can try and identify even if it's 1,000, 2,000 feet, 3,000 feet, whatever it may be, those closest uses, we're happy to do that. But it's our understanding and opinion here today that we don't have any impact on those sensitive uses just based upon the nature of the application.
Thank you, Al, Dave. You said you pushed the building over to get as far away from, as possible, from the residence on Lot 5.
residence on Lot 5. Your plans call for a wooded area, undisturbed, I guess. I'm reading into it a little bit, but it looks like it's about a distance of about 60 feet. Is that correct? To from the property line to the edge of.
I can look, I can look.
Just, you know, we have residents here. I'd like to give an idea of what we're.
Okay. Yes, well, you're 62.06 feet from the property line to the beginning of the parking area and then another 48 feet to the actual building. So in total, 110 feet.
But the buffer we were talking about is generally in the 60 foot range.
Correct, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions here from the board? I make the motion to open the caucus.
Yes.
Okay, does anyone from the public like to be heard regarding this application?
We'll sit down. The only thing that I have left is just a quick summation, so we'll, we'll wait to.
Who gives you your opportunity, sir?
Good evening.
Please, just sort of tell the truth about the test where you're going to get.
I do.
Your name and address.
My name is Lori Koblenz, 1770 Harding Highway. And I actually have a few questions. First, I'd like to know your background with regard to being a grower and what education you have as far as being a grower.
I have no personal education on that. I have a family member who runs a medical facility in Florida currently and I have a friend who's been running facilities in Colorado since they opened. I will be leaning heavily on them for advice and their expertise and knowledge.
But they will not be involved in the day-to-day operation of this business, correct? Okay. And you stated that you came to Franklin Township because you were looking for other property between ship bottom where you live and Franklin Township. There are many properties where there are sites available. So I'm just curious now, you said that, yes, while that piece of property is commercial, highway commercial, there are 36 residential family dwellings that are immediate surrounding the area. There are two elementary schools in less than one mile from this facility. There are churches within a mile of this facility. There are school buses that drive by this proposed facility several times a day. And there are kids that are outside playing on a regular basis, which is going to be during the operating hours of this facility. And we're, we're having somebody come in that actually has only a conditional license, which is solely based upon his ability to get this approved here. He has, he testified to the fact that he has no background in growing. This is a very risky thing and we're putting our children in jeopardy by allowing somebody with no experience to come into our town and open such a facility. And regardless, there is smell that's going to be emitted from the facility. You can go to any of the other places that grow and you can smell it. I personally don't want to smell it. First of all, I'm allergic, so I don't want that near me. But if you go to any of these facilities, you can smell them. And when those plants flower, they do emit an odor. So at some point, we are going to smell that. This is not what we want in this township. Thank you.
Anyone else? If you're ready, please just sort of tell the truth about the test where you're going to get.
I do.
Name and address.
Anthony DiOrio, and I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of my mother who lives at 1757 Harding Highway, which is a bordering property of Lot 7203, Lot 4.
You're not Lot 5.
No. No, we are, well, I'm not sure of our lot, but we are 1757, so we are a bordering property. Okay. So.
Three minutes time.
Okay. I've never done this before, so please bear with me. I would like to state that we are 100% against you granting this use variance. We believe it has a negative impact on property values, especially, especially those bordering it. If any bordering property owner decides to put their family home up for sale, not only would the value be decreased with the cannabis grow facility as a neighbor, also the potential pool of prospective buyers would also diminish. I don't know anyone personally who would want to buy a home with this type of business next door as a neighbor. I ask all the board members and also the gentleman representing Jason, if your neighbor decided to sell their property and a cannabis farm wanted to put a facility next door to you, would you really want it? And I think a truthful answer to that would be absolutely not. And most importantly, what effect will this have on our current and future generations by putting more product out for consumption? And with the term legal, does this make it safer or a good thing or make it right? Remember, just a couple of years ago, this was illegal. What changed? The only thing that changed is the date. Thank you.
I do. Debbie Morton, 1745 Harding Highway. I'm here tonight because I'm opposed to the request for this variance. I'm opposed to the construction of a cannabis cultivation facility so close to residential properties. And using the words of the township regarding the resolution of the high blend cannabis cultivation and manufacturing proposal, and I quote, "The proposed use would bring a substantial detriment to the neighborhood as proposed. This proposed variance will have a detrimental impact to the 18 family homes on Family Franklin Street, the four family homes on Madison Avenue between Harding Highway and Franklin Street, the two family homes on the opposite side of Harding Highway at the intersection of Madison Avenue, and the 11 family homes in the vicinity on Harding Highway. This is a total of 35 residential properties located within the immediate vicinity of this proposed variance and cannabis cultivation facility. These family homes are also within the back door of Newfield Borough, which voted no to allowing any form of cannabis business, which is essentially a slap in the face of the local residents who said they did not want this in their location. This high number of residents located so close would have a detrimental effect on quality of life, safety of property, potential safety of daily travel, potential impact on water supply, wastewater management concerns, noise, light, residual pesticides, odor pollution, as well as overall property value." The gentleman indicated that he did not have any, any windows on his facility, but with the stuff that his lawyer sent me in the picture, there are nine windows, I count. So I'm concerned with that. The town administrator himself told me when we met last Friday that retail sales of cannabis has been outlawed in the current ordinance, but can be reconsidered in 2026. Therefore, the use of this property could be changed to include retail as a cannabis, cannabis dispensary because he could go and request a different licensing. The current redevelopment plan does also allow for warehouses, so he could redevelop this property even more. On the plot, it indicated the placement of a cultivation facility at the front of the lot, which the township administrator, in his words, referred to it as phase one. He said, "The largest portion of the land which backs up to the residential homes on Harding Highway and Franklin Street as something that could be developed is phase two." He also mentioned that once a variance is granted, it opens the doors for the continued growth and development of the property. And right now, this gentleman is looking for indoor growth, but that could be changed once he has his foot in the door. As someone with several family members and friends owning their own businesses, I know that a company does not buy more property than what would be needed in their business and strategic growth plans as it drastically impacts startup capital and initial revenue. This falls in line with Mr. Finley, our township administrator's comment that the current proposed building site is only phase one and the largest portion of the property could be further developed to include manufacturing, additional cultivation facilities and/or retail distribution if the ordinance changes in 2026. He also indicated that he has developed and approved a policy prohibiting township personnel to use cannabis despite the state's law allowing recreational use. If this is such a beneficial product and revenue stream, why would the township disallow its use for employees while encouraging it for local residents and for businesses to come in? When asked, he also indicated that the other applicant, high blend, was probably denied due to the number of residents in the area. Again, we have 35 family homes within the immediate vicinity. We know that gate marijuana is a gateway drug, leads to the use of other drugs, is not something we as taxpayers want for our families and the children within our community. The primary goals of the township master plan is to preserve the quality of life in Franklin Township and to retain the rural character of life in Franklin Township. Cannabis facilities do not preserve the quality of life, nor do they retain the character of rural life. At last month's township meeting, a precedent was set when another cannabis business was voted down in that zone. And in the township's own word, again, the proposed use would represent a substantial detriment to the neighborhood as proposed. In a time when we are looking at equity and implicit bias, and that's top of mind, I'm asking that the zoning board place as much value on our residential quality of life and the value of our homes as the council did for the residents of Catawba Avenue and also vote no to a variance that would allow a cannabis facility in a location near residential homes. Thank you.
Sure to tell the truth about the test where you're going to get.
Yes, I do.
Name and address, please.
Maxwell Hunt, 314 Franklin Avenue, Newfield.
My wife and I, who live in Newfield, are very much opposed to this marijuana business, whether it be a cultivation or any type of marijuana business. We are very concerned with the wetlands, that the main body of the property, the, the stream, almost directly bisects from west to east, the property. The main bulk of the property that we think will be developed later or could be developed later. I also have a concern that the, the property being so large, but only a small portion of it being used for the, the current, what they're proposing, the building, which leads me to believe that further development will, will happen later. I'm also concerned about the, the impact on this stream area, which is a, really a very special ecosystem. It's a continually year-round flowing stream with all kinds of wildlife that runs through there. It would be difficult to see any development on the property that wouldn't impact that in some way. We're concerned about the odor. The counselor and his client seem to address that. But even with the state regulations, the main concern of any cannabis facility is the odor. So whatever they're doing to mitigate it does not seem to be solving the problem in many cases. It raises the question of the monitoring. How do you monitor odors? How do you enforce any kind of regulations that you would develop? I'm also concerned, and this is, this is where it gets personal, that we shouldn't be licensing or promoting marijuana facilities. I think that this board and this, this township has a unique opportunity to make Franklin Township a place that considers their, their residents and their children and their grandchildren important. I know that ratables are a big thing. I know that every small municipality needs the ratables. I know we're all scrambling for tax money. Nobody likes to pay taxes and everybody wants to get on the marijuana bandwagon. But wouldn't it be nice to have a group of elected officials think more of their residents, their children and their grandchildren and remove this kind of thing from their community? This is very personal to me because I have family members that have died of overdoses. A lot of people talk about marijuana being a gateway drug. And they'll use, they'll use stories and they'll use anecdotes and without any proof. But I have family members, three of whom lifetime Franklin Township residents that have overdosed of drugs and self-admitting that the gateway drug was marijuana. My cousin, first cousin, who lives on Stanton Avenue, on August 1st, 2019, he and his wife overdosed on probably heroin. Their son Billy came home and found him. My, my cousin was revived. His wife Debbie died. A little more than a year later, on September 26th, my cousin Harry's son overdosed and died in Malaga. On January 25th, 2021, my cousin died in Elmer Hospital of a body that was shutting down from drug use. All of them self-admitted to, to using marijuana, the first, and that was a gateway drug to prescription, drug abuse and heroin.
Thank you very much.
Just one last comment. Please consider the quality of life that you could make in a township that did not have drug dispensaries, drug growers, or any type of drug or marijuana facility. Thank you.
You sure to tell the truth about the test where you're going to get.
Yes.
Name and address.
Ralph Travoloni, 802 Marshmallow Road. The applicant here tonight is requesting a D1 use variance. D1 use variance under New Jersey state land use law is quite complicated on how you receive a D1. And the applicant has to show burden of proof in his testimony. And I believe this evening, to this present moment, he has not shown reason for the waiver for the variance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Travoloni. Anyone else like to be heard? Sure to tell the truth about the test where you're going to get.
Yes, my name is Monica Contrino. I live at 312 Franklin Avenue, Newfield. And I have, I, I want you to vote no for this. If it was going to be in your backyard, you wouldn't want it, I'm sure. I said, I, I'm sure my house values will go down. I'm worried about security. I don't, I, we've already had robberies on our street. You're just going to encourage more people, whether they know they have retail stores in there or not, just knowing that there's marijuana growing there, they're going to try and break in whether they get to it or not. We don't even have enough police officers. We never see the police anymore on our street. When Newfield had a department, they're always on our street because it's only one mile long. Now you've got three barrows.
You're opposed to the application?
Absolutely, I'm opposed to the application. I don't, I don't see a reason to have it. I don't know why you would want it. It's not medic, it's not for medical use. It's for recreational use. It's, it's like Mr. Hunt said, it's the start of a gateway for people to go on drugs. You know, like during that, during the pandemic, what did they leave open? Liquor stores, why? Because alcoholics needed to go to the liquor store. Everyone else had to stay locked up. This is a gateway for something that happened and it's, it's not good. Newfield voted it down. We don't want it. It's bordering Newfield. And why would you let that happen to our town that we didn't want it to? Put it in your backyard.
Thank you for your comments. Next.
Yes, I do. Michael Caro, 204 St. Barry Avenue, Newfield. I am also council president. We did vote against it and would not like to see it bordering our properties. So my question would be Meredith Farms. Does the township own that or is that privately owned? You know the property I'm speaking of? On Route 40 in Downstown?
I wouldn't know who owns it. Does township own it?
Yeah.
Township owns it? And the, the point I'm trying to make is it's set up as a light industrial park. There's no residential areas near it, anywhere near it. It's in Downstown. That'd be the perfect spot for this gentleman to do it and not affect Newfield residents. Could we look into that?
That's not.
Is, is that a property that you looked into or no?
No, it's not available.
It's a light industrial park and it's been empty for what, 20 years? So.
I'm sure there's a reason why it's.
I'm, they have LSA connections.
He's here for that, that piece of property.
But that piece of property. No, I understand that, but that property affects how many different residences, including Newfield? I'm just saying, there's other opportunities. So, thank you. So, thank you.
You swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're going to give?
I'm sorry.
You swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're going to give?
I do.
Name and address.
My name is Robert White. I live on 318 Franklin Avenue. I've been there for 43 years. This property borders, has two borders on my property. I'm at the very end of Franklin Avenue. For over the years, when my wife and I have walked up and down that stream, we've cleared it out, made a really nice nature walk down there. But a question I have for the applicant is, he says that his hours of operation go between 8:00 in the morning and 5:00 at night, and he's going to have a harvest of marijuana every three months. And that takes a lot of light and a lot of ventilation to get a yield every three months. And I don't care what anybody else says. My other question is, when they harvest this stuff, all they do, they take the flower and they trim it up and then they send it off. This is high-grade stuff. It's not like what it used to be back in the day. My question is... Oh, you're smiling, right? My question is, what do they do with the rest of the plant? Where does it go? All the leaves and the stalks and the branches, where does that go? All they take is the flower. The rest of it goes someplace. Now, we've been told there's going to be armed guards walking around this property. There's going to be bright lights. There's going to be generators running 24/7. And a smell that you can't escape.
That's not the testimony you're going to give.
Well, I know, I know, I know. But when it comes to this gateway stuff, I had two sons, my first marriage. Both of them are in the grave. One of them from hepatitis, stuck a needle in his arm. The other one, he died from neglect. The first one was 46 years old. Second one, he made it to 52. He died from neglect. He was so, his brain was so curdled on marijuana all the time, he couldn't get off of the couch. And he died, his body just shut down. And that's what I have to say, and I'm against this thing. And I know you guys wouldn't want it in your backyard. And everybody in this room knows that that crap is wrong. It's wrong to do that stuff. And how can you tell your kids, "Oh, don't mess with that stuff," and yet you're growing it? I drove a school bus for Delsey Regional for 12 years, and my time is up. I thought I had five minutes.
Two more minutes.
Oh, sorry. Well, I guess I've said enough.
Action. You swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're going to give?
I do.
Name and address.
Dave Marshall, 67 New Road. This is kind of reminiscent of how the whole redevelopment study started. We've got a little bit of residents, a little bit more, it kind of looks familiar, doesn't it? Hopefully, we're not going to have the same turnouts month after month after month, where I'm hoping the township does a better job of stopping it before it gets that far. Most of the residents brought up they're against it, as I am. Couple things I want to point out outside of what they have. I found some discrepancies to what you were talking about with your water usage. From what I'm seeing, the average use is 300 gallons per day for the average marijuana facility. Most of the time, they're using 3,000 gallons per thousand foot of use, a thousand foot of growing. That's a lot more than what you were talking about for use. That's a lot of water that's either got it recycled or goes back in the ground.
I've talked to multiple cultivation experts. This is what they're telling me. I can only go by what someone, an expert in the field, is telling me.
I'm just going by what California and Colorado were stating as their average. Yep, I thought I was loud enough, sorry. Crimes on cannabis facilities are up about 51% in those two states. And it's from the small growers all the way up. The more rural it is, the higher the percentage of theft, sometimes from within, from employees, sometimes out. These are all stats that are available online. 51%. That's a crime we don't need in this township. The police are stretched too thin now with the distance they cover, or they just can't do it. Not to mention the possible risk to the residents around there with the crime. You did not mention whether you were going to have guards on the facility or not. Most facilities do, and I think they're required. Are you going to have guards on the facilities?
No, we have 24-hour, 7-minute monitoring. Cameras that will be monitored.
So the camera will run somebody down when they have a gun and rob the place and go into residence, Jordan? That's what I thought. Empty buildings. California right now has a 17% empty building rate on cannabis facilities because they've oversaturated the area and they're closing up at that rate. 17%, empty buildings. Not like we don't have that issue already in the township. With the theft rates going up, the sales going down, because again, the oversaturation and the empty buildings that are there, something we don't need added to this township. We've got to fix, like I've said before at other meetings, we've got to fix the problems we have before we bring more in. That's it for me. Thank you.
You swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're going to give?
I do. Dave Morton, 1707 Harding Highway, Newfield. Short and sweet. I'm against this 100%. Many property values, drugs for kids, pretty much the same thing everybody's saying here. Crime. I think crimes, they say police are going to police things. Police are overwhelmed as it is, and their hands are tied. So, short and sweet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? You swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're going to give?
I do.
Name and address.
Joe Davis, 1779 Harding Highway, Newfield, New Jersey. We are opposed to the granting of this use variance. We don't feel like this is a good location for this type of establishment. This area is a long-established residential neighborhood. The property is surrounded by residential homes. Our home has been there for 31 years. The next two homes between ours and the petitioning property have been there even longer, and the next three closest homes were built decades ago by the parents of the current residents. It is an area where residents chose to raise their families. An operation of this type does not belong in what is essentially a neighborhood. We are concerned about the quality of life due to this establishment, whose potential later phases could destroy the woodlands, the wildlife habitats surrounding us. The later phases will literally be in our backyards. If this variance is granted, it will allow this type of facility next to residential homes. It will surely be your backyards next. Thank you.
Chris Sayers, 184 Malaga Lake Boulevard? Yes, I do. Chris Sayers, 184 Malaga Lake Boulevard. You know, I will say, I mean, thank God, I've never had anybody that I've lost to drug overdoses or any kind of situation. I've been very blessed in that way. But I would hope, sorry, I'm losing my temper. I would hope if I did, I wouldn't be rushed off of the dais to give an emotional impact statement, because some people don't have time to listen to it. Little courtesy, ladies and gentlemen. So, one of the primary goals of Franklin Township's master plan is to preserve our quality of life. Now, I would not go so far as to say that any and all cannabis cultivation would detract from that quality of life. However, development of these businesses are new, and they must be planned smartly. Again, these are new. We have no guarantees, even from the witness himself, that odor mitigation would be achieved. There's also questions of security, of pollution, of traffic, of light pollution. We should not rubber stamp this, or any application, especially one that requires a variance. This area is zoned as highway commercial. In that zone, adult-oriented retail is forbidden. Now, while this is not a retail operation per se, it is still a grower, distributor, and bulk seller for adult-oriented products. I personally don't see the difference. This should also give the board pause. It is my understanding that there are also 18 more applicants, or similar applicants, for cannabis cultivation facilities in this township alone. Nearly every zoning board meeting has become a flashpoint of controversy. This is no way to plan development in our town, regardless if you're for or against it. I encourage you to listen to the residents and to be a part of a group that advocates the township committee to develop broad-based, common sense regulations so that it gets you gentlemen out of the hot seat and not as part of the flashpoint that unfortunately these facilities are created in this township. Thank you.
You swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're going to give?
Yes. Terry Tabler, 1792 Harding Highway, which is almost directly across the street. I'm against it completely. I agree with, everybody's pretty much said what I wanted to say. But I'm completely against it. And anybody that is for it, I want to know how close they are to it. You know, you guys aren't close to it, but we are, and it would affect me. And I will tell you, the ones that are around here do give off a scent, the ones if you go travel. I'm allergic to it, and I'm almost across the street. So I'd have that effect on my health. I've been there for 33 years, and my dad owned the property before that. And I just don't think it's fair for something like that kind of business to come in when I'm living in a home along with all these other people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're going to give?
I do.
Name and address.
Raymond Contorino, 312 Franklin Avenue, Newfield. You know, I've gone through the school system, through Franklin Township, both Delsey Middle School and the high school. And you see the drugs through the school all the time, no matter what. Somebody tells you, it's in there. You know? My best friend, he was on it, and sure enough, laying him in jail. Biggest thing I see is a security problem because it's just going to give a reason for people to come through our property trying to sneak onto this property. You know, you say that it's going to be in a drawing room and everything like that, but that's not going to stop somebody from trying to break in. It's just a big security risk, you know? I mean, it's just going to bring more people on our street, staking out our properties, trying to steal from us, possibly breaking into our houses. I mean, I don't really have much more else to say on that.
You swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're going to give?
Yes, I do. Helen Penn, 1805 Harding Highway, Newfield. Okay, I'm going to be the one right next door to it. And I lived there 34 years. I'm totally against it. I don't like it. I'm used to the wildlife, and I am totally sick from it, the smell, so I will be very sick from that. And I have asthma.
Okay, thank you.
Hi. I'm now representing...
Keep coming back up.
I actually own two properties on Harding Highway, so I'm representing both properties. That's okay. I still am paying taxes on two properties, so, thank you. So, on February 27th, the Township Environmental Commission had concerns and questions that were raised about the previous applicant who had done it. As far as what are the disposal arrangements for the water in which plants will be grown? Because it will have nutrients in. How will it impact the groundwater? They were also asking about the expansion of the building as the company continued to grow, and questions for the security lighting, which some of that has been addressed. But in doing the research on that, there are articles on hazards of cannabis production. As the cannabis industry grows, so have the fire, health, and safety risks in cannabis extraction facilities. According to the Environmental Science and Technology Letters, they did a peer-reviewed research on relationships between cannabis and environmental outcomes, and identified six documented impact pathways from cannabis cultivation, land cover change, water use, pesticide use, energy use, and air pollution, and consumption of water pollution. We also have the fact that when we are looking at micro businesses, they are able to change what their applications are. So he will be able to put in for a different application than just cultivation. We have looked at the fact that there are actually marijuana companies that have been caught with money laundering, because this is not something that can have money deposited into federally, the FDIC-insured banks, because it is not federally regulated or acknowledged since it is illegal federally. There are articles from the greenhouse about the controlling greenhouse light pollution. Nocturnal light from any kind of greenhouses like this has been shown to create ecological issues for sensitive animal populations, negatively impact light-sensitive crops in area facilities, disrupt people's sleep patterns in nearby residential communities. Light pollution is also affecting nature seasonal changes, which is impacting when plants are starting to bud, the color change in the fall when they're becoming dormant. And it is actually saying that they are impacting also because of this, the pollinators that we need, such as the bees. In environmental research, with odor emissions a public health concern for health risk perception, workers in communities living close to odor-producing facilities result directly exposed to irritant air pollutants through inhalation, and for this reason, the cumulative health risk assessment is recommended. Health effects are related to the concentration, exposure, duration to odorants, as well as to their irritant potency, and biotransformation and hazardous metabolites. The health effects of a single chemical are well-known, while the interactions between molecules with different functional groups still have to be extensively studied. When we're looking at this, we have a knowledge gap. I'm not saying that this industry won't have a time and a place, but it does not have a time and a place near 35 family homes when we still have such a knowledge gap of what is the detrimental long-term impact of this. I don't know how many people were here when there was issues with the residuals from the thermometer plant that had problems. There were problems that people were getting notifications up in the Pittman area from the pollutants in Alcyon Lake, because they were getting information that there could be cancers. We do not yet know what these long-term impacts are. I, for one, do not want to be the guinea pig.
You swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're going to give?
Yes, I do.
Name and address.
Mary White, 318 Franklin Avenue, in Newfield. Can you hear me? First of all, I just can't believe that we would have such a hostile business in a friendly neighborhood. We can walk in those woods, we walk along the stream, and here we would have this building with these bright security lights, cameras, locked rooms, no windows, fences. It changes the whole environment. It changes our whole nature of our neighborhood. I haven't prepared, I can say what I was going to say. I'm going to say it now, because that was my off-the-paper one. So I've lived in that same house on Franklin Avenue for almost 43 years. I'm very familiar with the wetlands area behind our homes on Franklin Avenue. Over many years, I have cleaned out invasive plants and briars along the stream to allow for a walking path. Off the path, I have discovered wildflowers not found elsewhere, on developed land and on properties that are mowed. I've found like lady slippers, jack-in-the-pulpit, all these wildflowers I never saw before in my life. In the same area, I've seen deer, deer, turkey, fox, raccoon, opossums, giant turtles, the great blue heron, black and mellar ducks. We don't know the impact of the proposed business on these native plants and animals in this wetland area. The concerns of the lighting, a big concern, noise, the reduction of the tree canopy, and the use of water from our stream and springs, which are already diminished by reduced rainfall. The stream is very low right now, and with his water use, it would greatly affect that. It's unknown what the plan would be for the wastewater, possibly contaminated with nitrates. Little time was given to us citizens of this area to prepare for this proposal. Thank you.
You swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're going to give?
I do.
Name and address.
Larissa Contorino, 312 Franklin Avenue. I'm against it on the ends of, my mother does not feel safe in her home. My father passed away almost five years ago, and for her to not feel safe in her own home is absolutely deplorable. The fact that she has to worry about that, the fact that my brother and I have to worry about our safety, also is a big issue. We're not home all the time. We're young. We go out, we do what we want to do. But to worry about my mom when I'm not home is not something I usually have to worry about. She's a strong, independent person. She's a strong, independent person, and to be fearful that random people are going to come up on our street, try to come in through a back way, I mean, if there's a way, there's a way, someone's going to figure it out. So I'm against it on the whole idea that I don't want anybody on this street that I live on to feel that way, and if I know my mom feels that way, I can guarantee how many people who aren't even here tonight feel that way. She was fearful when she got the letter, because it had my deceased father on it, which made her fear that her house was of her an issue, because she wasn't home when the letter came in. There was a lot of fear that came into this, and there's a lot of fear coming out of it today. So I do appreciate your time, but I really hope it doesn't happen.
Before I tell you about the testimony you're going to give.
I do. Bill Quigley, 311 Franklin Avenue, Newfield. I served on Newfield planning board for over 30 years. I don't envy you guys, this is going to be a rough one. You might not have thought this was going to be so bad when you came tonight, but we are totally against this, all right? We live in a residential area. You guys are talking about a commercial area, I know that, but we're adjacent to you guys, and what I would ask you to be is a good neighbor to us in Newfield, all right? This application has a place, all right? And somebody already mentioned you're in industrial park down the street where there's nobody at. That would be perfect, all right? And I would think you would take that into consideration. And I know you don't have to, but we really don't want to see this go through, and we're from Newfield, I understand, we're in another municipality, and we're just asking you to be good neighbors. I got a whole list of other questions and stuff like that. They basically answered them, all right? I worked at the Land and Sewerage Authority for over 36 years. Do I know odor? I know odor, all right? Can you put carbon filters and scrub it? You can, there's a lot of maintenance, all right? There's a place on the boulevard, I don't know if any of you go down the boulevard on Wheat Road, they say there's a place there, all right? I thought it was a bunch of skunks. I figured, oh, there's a herd of skunks living here. Every time we go by, there's a smell. Have any of you been past any of these manufacturers or growing facilities? No? I have, all right? It stinks. Maybe they don't have the carbon scrubbers, maybe they don't have chemicals to do the job, maybe they don't have the insulation. They're in an old building, so they probably don't. But it is, it's a pundit smell, all right? And go to any park where the kids are smoking it, or young people, or older people, it's pundit, it's bad, all right? We play pickleball at a park, and guess what? The kids come out, or the older people come out, and they're smoking, and you can smell it from a car, all right? And that's outside, all right? Now, the wind's only going to blow to one direction to get Franklin Avenue some of the time, but there will be an odor. To me, this is one of those things, if it was in Newfield, which we couldn't have a place like this, all right? You would have a special zoning district, which I know you guys probably don't have it, because nobody does, all right? Away from people as far as you can get, all right? And that's where your industrial park up there, you guys got to know about it, all right? Like I said, I worked at Land and Sewerage Authority, we have a pipeline that goes there. I don't know why you're not doing anything with it, you know what I mean? And I know it's hard, all right? But that's the type place this belongs, not adjacent to a residential area. Thank you.
Before I tell you about the testimony you're going to give.
Yes, sir.
Robert Price, 123 Fawn Drive, Newfield, resident for 25 years, and family's been in there
for 45, prior to me. I'm totally, hopefully you guys make the right decision. When Mr. Quigley spoke about it and the environmental controls, he's absolutely right. Creek Road, Belmore, 42, where the construction's going on, there's a big growing facility there. Something's going on with their environmental controls. Burling Coyle on the boulevard, Wheat Road, they grow for pure relief out on Delsey Drive, that's where their growing facility is. It's supposed to be environmental control. I work in construction. There's not enough environmental controls in these facilities. To me, I have to agree with Mr. Quigley and, you know, Councilman Carroll, President Council, that the Meredith Farms facility is far enough away from plenty of homes, your infrastructure's already there, and everything's good, no occupants. Need to get somebody there for your ratables. Fortunately, we're losing one, Fieldaloy, and nothing can go back there, Brownfield. Hopefully, this will never become a Brownfield instead of a Farmfield. I think the Farmfield should be, that's farmland, should be preserved. Anything that already has infrastructure in for it can go down to an industrial park. Warehouses that somebody, okay, has proposed should go to the industrial park, like Violent City. Not in a residential neighborhood, affecting 31 homes, plus you're within a half mile of the Egerton School. You know, it's not a good thing. Security, sorry, sir, beg to differ, anybody who wants to get in can get in. We can call 911, and the third party's going to call 911, it's going to take two to three minutes. Your address has to be on the highway side too, with the four-by-four posts before 9/11 purposes. So, it's a bunch of other little things, but I think, and then, what if there is a fire? How close is the closest person and knockbox? There's a bunch of little questions that need to be answered. Not for this board, but I hope you guys deny this and have it sent somewhere else. I mean, the man looked for six months. He came to Franklin Township for this. Y'all have a nice evening. Thank you.
Before I tell you about the testimony you're going to give. I do.
Name and address.
Barbara Halpern, 2446 Harding Highway, Newfield, New Jersey. I live in highway commercial. Contrary to what everyone else is saying, I would welcome this next door to me. And I live alone, I'm an old lady, I'm getting my social security this year, and I'm not afraid of stranger danger. First of all, I believe in his odor mitigation that's going to work. I myself wear a carbon filter mask everywhere, because the perfume and air quality sucks in here, and I would not be okay breathing the air that you are all breathing, because I am environmentally sensitive, and I would not have a problem living next to that. I would have a problem living next to a lot of things that are allowed in the highway commercial zone, including a conditional use of like a gas station, or even a Wawa where there's millions of trucks and lots of people, and that's more stranger danger than this facility that won't be labeled. No one will know what the hell it is unless you all tell them. And I disagree that marijuana is this great gateway drug. It is a medicine, and those people like myself who have chemical sensitivities, who cannot take normal over-the-counter type of drugs, use marijuana to mitigate problems like the chronic headaches I get when I'm exposed to fragrance or exhaust and things like that. And to have medical marijuana, it's extremely cost prohibitive and expensive, so a lot of people that buy retail are buying it for medical reasons, not because they're just going to get so high and don't know what's going on. They're not all unproductive citizens. I think everyone in this room knows how productive I am, that I am here all the time, I do my research, and I know what I'm talking about when it comes to application site plan review, septic wells. I do have concerns about what happens to the water in this facility. Will it increase the nitrates, or the phosphates, or anything else in our groundwater? And I think that the applicant should address that issue either later, when his application comes in, or maybe after the public portion is closed. I do not think that it's going to cause any issues. If crime was an issue, all these other, you'd read it in the newspapers, and I get the newspaper every day, and there's nothing in the paper about crime at all these facilities. I've gone to dispensaries, I've been to the one in Egg Harbor a couple of times at least, two, three times, no odors. I've gone to the one in Belmore, no odors. I drive by the one in Vineland all the time, no odors, but people are lined up into the, almost to the road, all of the time when you go by the one in Vineland. So there is a demand. There are people who are responsible users, such as myself, and I only use it as necessary to relieve problems that I cannot take over-the-counter drugs for, or even prescription drugs for. And there are many people like me. You know, there are people that abuse drugs, but it goes beyond marijuana, and alcohol is the gateway drug, not marijuana. Kids will try alcohol, they'll try cigarettes, way before anything else, and a lot of the gateway is prescription, and our own police chief said it himself, not the current one, but the one before, he said that it's not the gateway drug they thought it was. So I dismiss a lot of this stranger danger, a lot of this anti-cannabis. If this was anything else, we wouldn't hear this. There's also more than 300 feet to the stream, and it will be wooded, so even if an odor, let's say, escaped, the people who live behind wouldn't smell anything, because there would be trees and forests and plenty of nature between what is being cleared and where these people live. The person who lives next door is more likely to be affected than the people behind.
What do you mean?
So, basically, I'm pro, and I applaud this person for being brave enough to come here and try to bring this business here, and at some point, we have to allow it, and if you'd like to look at the property next to me, please do.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to hear? I make a very good call. All favor, I oppose. Next question. Okay.
Thank you, everyone, for your comments. We truly do appreciate that, and we don't take them lightly. I know it may seem that we do, because we're here seeking variance relief, but we do appreciate your time, so thank you for coming out this evening. I think two things that I'd like to clarify just before summing up. One was the ability to conduct retail sales on the property. At the state level, that's not allowed. For medical operations, those medical vertically integrated companies are allowed to do that. Again, that was under the prior medical statute, so currently, a person who holds a cultivation license could not also hold a retail license and do that on the same site. So by virtue of seeking cultivation, we would not be allowed to do retail on the same site. Also, with respect to the concerns about wetlands, we also take those seriously. The client has mapped the current wetlands on the site. As part of the site plan approval, we have to do a number of things. We have to get what's called a line verification from the Department of Environmental Protection, confirming that our wetlands location is accurate. We also have to verify the absence of endangered or threatened species, which increases that buffer that you would be able to develop. Again, the property is nowhere near the wetlands line as is, and this application is solely based upon the concept plan that we've prevented, which does not impact those wetlands at all based upon what we've mapped, and will be submitting to DEP for approval. So I thought those two things were just important to hit before summing up. So, in general, ladies and gentlemen, we are here again seeking D1 use variance relief. Because of that, we are required to satisfy a legal burden. That legal burden encompasses both positive and negative criteria. Positive criteria here have effectively two prongs. One of those prongs is that the purpose of the application will advance at least one or more purposes of the municipal land use law, and that the site is particularly suitable for the proposed use. I looked at the purposes of the municipal land use law and compared them to what this application would or could potentially advance in satisfying that legal burden, and found that three of those purposes were advanced. Those purposes, as you likely know, are numerated numerically, I'm sorry, not numerically, but alphabetically. First purpose being Purpose G, and that's to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, and industrial uses, according to their respective requirements in order to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens. Here, as you know, we are in a highway commercial district along the township's commercial corridor of Route 40. It's proposed to be used for a small commercial agricultural site. No processing, no extraction, no manufacturing, or retail. The state, as we have seen today, has approved far more dispensaries than they have cultivators, lending unfortunately what could be some of those issues that the gentleman mentioned from California, where there's too many dispensaries, not enough supply. This application would allow a small local operator who is limited in his license, both in capacity and a number of things in terms of who can own the license, how many people he can employ, how many people he can employ, where those employees have to live, how much product he can dispense, et cetera, assist with meeting that need statewide. So that purpose would be advanced by this application if the relief were granted. Second is Purpose C, to provide adequate light, air, and open space. Again, this is a large parcel that is impacted by wetlands with a proposed development of a building footprint of under 5,000 square feet. It doesn't impact any nearby public open spaces, it doesn't impact any parks, it doesn't detract from those public spaces that are currently used for the public, and also doesn't result in any significant traffic. Most importantly, no truck traffic, which I know is a concern statewide in general. And finally, Purpose A. Our courts have held that if you're at least able to satisfy one or more of the purposes of the land use law, then an applicant should be able to at least be satisfying Purpose A. And Purpose A is to encourage municipal action that guides appropriate use or development of lands in a manner which will promote public health, safety morals, and general welfare. As I'll discuss more in the negative criteria, the township did not prohibit this use when enacting its cannabis zoning ordinance. They did prohibit retail, and they did prohibit delivery license. We're therefore looking for an appropriate site for this use, not just in Franklin Township, but statewide. So by ensuring that a site is chosen carefully, ensuring that the site is of low impact, follows all applicable state requirements, we're allowing for a small amount of growth and additional commerce in a responsible way that brings a few jobs and some revenue into town. This request of relief would clearly encourage that action promoting and providing for the appropriate use and development of land, and again, by satisfying all of the state requirements and the local concerns with respect to things like noise, odor, light, any other impacts, and the fact that the use is pretty much indiscernible, we would argue that that is both safe and beneficial for the township as a whole. Second aspect of the positive criteria is that the site is particularly suitable for the proposed use. Again, we're along Harding Highway here, which is easily able to accommodate the state's commercial corridors, things like Route 295, Parkway, Expressway, Route 130. And while we're not a trucking use, while we don't have a distribution operation here, the applicant is intending to distribute statewide, and ease of access is important here. We've stated again that we're surrounded by a variety of commercial uses. Those uses include various contractors, contracting supply stores, trucking logistics facility, farming uses, residential uses, and undeveloped land. The site benefits from existing natural vegetative buffers, and even though there is a very low frequency of pickups here, they're accomplished by small vans. Finally, it's a site that allows this applicant easily to blend in with existing commercial uses along Route 40. This area in particular is not so densely developed that this development would stick out, nor is it so sparsely developed where one new development would stick out like a sore thumb. There are widely developed and widely developed properties that have space in between them, they're not closely or densely developed, and this application, based upon what you've heard this evening, would be able to uniquely blend in with those other existing uses. With respect to the negative criteria, again, there are two prongs. The negative criteria, we have to show that there's no detriment to the surrounding neighborhood, I'm sorry, no substantial detriment to the surrounding neighborhood, and that the requested relief does not impair the intent and purpose of the township zoning ordinance or master plan. With respect to the first criteria, or I'm sorry, the first prong of the negative criteria, again, we've stated that this use will blend seamlessly into those other existing commercial uses in the area. The small building footprint of the building, coupled with the fact that it's new construction, the applicant's significant and multi-layered odor mitigation requirements, minimal lighting requirements for the exterior of the site, and complying with all state security and odor odor regulations as well, allows us to have effectively no impact on the surrounding neighborhood. This is not something that conducts retail sales. It is not something that has a high volume of employees or a high volume of turnover, nor does it require any activity outside. As you've also heard from the applicant, the product itself is effectively non-attractive to any criminal activity. And when it is usable, it is immediately taken off-site by secure transports into dispensaries where that usable product is stored. So the fact that this facility is effectively imperceptible, but would allow additional commercial uses in the, in the district means that we have no substantial detriment to the surrounding area. Finally, with respect to impairing the intent and purpose of the township zoning ordinance and the master plan, I want to address four things. I know I keep breaking this up, but there are four things that I think are important to address in this specific part of negative criteria. First being the zoning map. When we look at where the property is located, not just in the median area, but in the township as a whole, we are on Harding Highway, we are within a highway commercial district, but we're also directly across the street from a light manufacturing district. We're not bordered by any residential districts in this township. And importantly, the highway commercial district is different than the other commercial districts within the township. Things like the neighborhood commercial, village commercial districts encourage residential-based commercial uses. They want commercial uses that are compatible with residential. They want walkable shopping restaurants, things like that, that are compatible with residential uses. The highway commercial district actually explicitly discourages residential development. That's not to say that we should not be mindful of existing residences. We are mindful of that and we feel that our application has addressed that and then some. But the, the fact that the highway commercial district encourages a specific type of commercial use is important here, and the fact that it's intermingled with light manufacturing. If you look at where the light manufacturing districts are located, they are interspersed with highway commercial. They're not separated off into some, you know, corner of the township, they're not relegated to industrial parks, they are integrated in with highway commercial. And even though we are not proposing manufacturing, we've heard several residents indicate that this would be more appropriate in industrial areas, we think it's important that both highway commercial and light manufacturing are consistently interspersed along Route 40 and Route 47. Second, the zoning district itself. So the highway commercial district itself permits a number of compatible uses. Those compatible uses are building material supply stores, garden centers, special contractor uses, and other more intense uses like bars and restaurants. Importantly, I think the prohibited uses are relevant here as well, because the highway commercial district states some specific things that they do not want in this district. Those are junkyards, check cashing facilities, and adult-oriented retail. Prohibited is just important here, because if we were remotely close to any one of those prohibited uses, it would be easy to argue that this is inconsistent with the district. But we are nowhere near consistent or relevant to those specifically prohibited uses. We are more so in line with those uses that are permitted within the district. Third, it's important to highlight the action taken by the township with respect to cannabis in general in adopting Ordinance 6-21. This was the ordinance that not only Franklin Township, but all townships in the state had to address before August of 2021 in order to opt-in or opt-out of cannabis uses in accordance with state law. As I mentioned, the township specifically prohibited retail and it specifically prohibited delivery operations from operating in town. It could have, but did not prohibit cultivation. Because Ordinance 621 did not specifically prohibit cultivation, an argument could be made that under state law, it's automatically prohibited in industrial areas. So we did look at that. There is one industrial area in the town, the Pine Lands Light Manufacturing Industrial District, and that consists of a total of two parcels. Those two parcels are neither available and they are also surrounded by the rural residential district. So instead, the, by proposing cultivation in an area that is highway commercial, has consistent and compatible uses, we feel we're meeting the intent of the township's ordinance in enacting 621 prohibiting specific uses, but appearing to intend to allow or at least invite the potential for cultivation uses. Fourth and finally, is the impact on the master plan. And the master plan, of course, obviously does not specifically mention cannabis. Wasn't around when the master plan was last updated, but what we can do is look to the highway commercial zone and what it does encourage in general. And we advance several purposes of the master plan. Most notably, the master plan indicates that the township should provide a broad economic foundation by expanding opportunities for commercial development in appropriate zoning districts. And I think that's important because it says expanding opportunities for commercial development, not a specific type of commercial development, not a specific district, just commercial development opportunities in the appropriate zoning district. So we feel that this application advances that by taking a use which was not contemplated at the time, but is similar to and consistent with other uses in the district. The land use settlement also did not propose a reduction in opportunities for non-residential development, which is equally important. Sometimes master plans indicate that non-residential or commercial development should be hindered in certain areas, certain types of development should be prohibited, or zoning ordinances should be amended in order to prevent certain types of future development. The absence of that, again, is equally important here. And that the highway commercial district, this type of use or the intent to roll back certain commercial development was not mentioned anywhere in the master plan. So not only do we advance one of the purposes of the master plan in general, but we do not detract from anything that the master plan was trying to prevent. The proposed use is therefore consistent with the master plan and we feel that this application advances it. Finally, as a general note, this application does not create a precedent. I understand that there is some concern and the thought is out there that if this application is granted, the entire highway commercial zone then becomes available and open for business for cultivation and the floodgates cannot be stopped. That could not be further from the truth. This is one application based upon a concept plan for a specific building footprint, a specific license category, a specific type of cannabis cultivation on a specific parcel. 20 feet down the road, I'm sorry, 200 feet down the road, 1,000 feet down the road, completely different. Any other applicant who wants to come in to do cultivation in town would not be able to rely upon this approval to justify their application. They have an independent burden to satisfy their obligation based upon that piece of property, based upon the nature and scope of that proposed operation. So I would implore the board to, to consider that in that we are not creating precedent here, we are simply reviewing this application as, as it stands here on its merits alone. I respectfully submit that we have satisfied the legal burden in both the positive and negative criteria for this application. We would be open to any comments or suggestions and of course, would look forward to the opportunity to satisfy all site plan related comments at that time. And we appreciate your consideration this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. What are some of the, repeat some of the uses that are permitted?
Was, need to get back to my... Oh, that's prohibited uses. Building material supply stores, garden centers, and special contractor uses were those that we felt were most compatible. Bars and restaurants were those were not related, but were more intense.
Bars and restaurants are permitted use there. Thank you. Any other questions, gentlemen? Mike, anyone?
Just to clarify, this is for the use only. So the site issues, if you were to grant this, the site plan issues would be addressed as a separate application. I know we just heard the other application and you really should not try to compare. And that was in a residential zone, it was a larger operation. So really try to focus on the aspects of this application. Since you're just dealing with the, with the use part, you're really looking at the compatibility with what is allowed in the highway commercial zone. All of the standards set forth by Mr. Wells were correct, positive, negative criteria properly stated. You need to determine whether he's met that burden. To simplify to some extent, I think an important part of it is the compatibility of the uses in this, in this, this agreement.
I don't, full disclosure.
And this application does require five affirmative votes as a... Okay, gentlemen, you heard the testimony, you heard the public, 99% of them are against this. We also heard the, the comments from the attorney and that we have to apply the standards. So it can't be a motion.
Excuse me, can I ask one clarification, please? Because it goes to do with the use in that zone. And he said adult entertainment would be prohibited. And if this is for recreational use only, is that not adult entertainment? That would be prohibited then? This is not for medical use, he said it is for recreational use. So therefore, that's adult entertainment and that's not a permitted use. So how can we allow this?
Specifically, the prohibited use is adult-oriented retail business. That was prohibited. Adult-oriented retail.
It's not even got adult folks. Yeah, it's pretty clear what you're talking about.
So first testimony, it's not a retail operation.
Are we speaking to the mic, please?
Anyone can make a motion to agree with Jeremy if you wish.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the, the use variance. I, I think that's going to have a low impact, there's a lot worse things that could go in there than this cannabis operation.
Bring your kids there.
My kids are going to go to school with my grandchildren.
Motion by...
Listen to the faithful.
Second by Dan DeSuzo.
Mr. Mallow? Mr. Cuthbert? Mr. DeSuzo? Mr. Garfola?
No.
Mr. Gaetano? Four yeses.
Need five for him.
Okay, motion, Mr. Bush.
Back to Chip. Wonderful, wonderful. There is some justice.
Go back to Chip.
Just wanted to thank you for your time this evening, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, Mike. We went through the minutes on the previous meeting.
Ready, go.
Is that the U.C. ex?
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Here's on two sets of minutes, you have the minutes, three minutes of the May second meeting and the closed session minutes from April 4th of '23, which are now being adopted as public because the reason for the closed session minutes is no longer existing.
So the closed session minutes are now public?
Yes, then you have copy of it.
And you want us to...
You have to approve vote, the closed session minutes and the minutes for...
Can I make that vote? All in favor, I oppose.
And that was for vote? Okay. Isn't you abstaining for that one?
Yes.
Because I think you were not in that state since I was there. In the present for the closed session?
We're only doing the closed session.
Oh, I'm sorry, are you doing vote or just the closed session?
We did vote by this, he has to stand one at a time.
I, I make the motion for a regular. That's the next.
Second by Michael, all in favor, I oppose. Now for the, because I made a motion for a vote. Second by, I, all in favor, I oppose, and one.
And as explained in those closed session minutes, at that time, you approved authorization for appeal to be filed. And we did not go to an open session because we could not, at that point, due to the legal strategy, that's still being in the process. Because of the time limit's running for the time to the appeal, we had to have that authorization because the next meeting wasn't going to be involved two days before the time ran. So since then, the appeal was filed, so I asked that you make a motion, somebody make a motion of authorizing the, ratifying the authorization of the appeal since it has already been filed.
Is there a motion to ratify the authorization for the appeal? The DeSuzo. Second by Michael, all in favor, I oppose. Again, but we want attention. Did I hit what you were going to say, Mike?
You're next up, we're going to need a brief closed session on the same subject. I bet you're anxious to say this.
Can we do the secretary report?
Sure.
Finish that.
I guess so, we have a few people here who need to address, I guess, if we didn't. No, we did not. We didn't do the rest of the...
The high ones? I signed. By the whole, I oppose.
That was for the high one, wasn't it?
Yeah.
The closed session, they asked for a motion to a closed session to...
I make a mic, we go, close. All in favor, I.